Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Pleasantville City Council Work Meeting. Today is June the 3rd, 2024. The time is 2:30, 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper in performance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call, please. Davenport.
Present.
Dammalaram.
Here.
Cimona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Blackley.
Present.
Olvisby. Thomas.
Present.
Six and a tenth. For the record, Mr. Olvisby has, he's going to miss the meeting due to a personal issue. May I have approval of the previous minutes?
Go ahead, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Okay, first agenda is Resolution 84 authorizing appointment of firefighter, appointment of firefighter to timing boarding.
Any questions?
You're doing the appointment in the regular meeting.
Okay, we want to do the appointment in the regular meeting, okay? So right after the work session.
Board is number six, first reading amendment, chapter 195 regulating the operation of local retail food businesses.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 85 endorsing urban enterprise zone assistance fund project entitled litter collection equipment project for the public improvement of UZ in the amount of $536,972.06.
Madam Deacon, can you elaborate on what you're asking?
Certainly, so as stated on the resolution, this is a project that will be funded under the urban enterprise zone, which is no money from the city's budget. This is grant money to help supplement the city with equipment. This particular equipment will be used for the litter collection program or project for new sweepers and also to help us leverage another grant for an electric vehicle.
Thank you. Council, any questions? CNN?
Resolution 86 approve of the renewal of plenary retail distribution liquor licenses for the 2024 through 2025 term.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 87 approve of the renewal of plenary retail consumption liquor licenses for the 2024 through 2025 term.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 88 authorize a person-to-person transfer of a plenary retail consumption liquor license to Cedar Liquor Market LLC. Please note that this resolution will be pulled for this evening. All parties have asked for it to be pulled and asked for it to be rescheduled for the June 17th meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Resolution 89 authorize submission of a grant application and execution of a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for pedestrian safety improvements within the city.
Madam Deacon?
Certainly, this is, as stated, a grant application for the city to apply under the New Jersey Department of Transportation for digital signage throughout town. That would be your speeding, your speed signage, and also your cameras throughout town.
Thank you. Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 90 authorize the execution of a memorandum of understanding with G and M Associates LLC to create a redevelopment plan and to negotiate a redevelopment agreement to develop 40 townhomes, houses at lots one and 14 and block 382.
Any questions, council?
I didn't.
Yes, go ahead, Madam.
Did this resolution or did this redevelopment plan and everything go back through the planning board?
So right now I want to yield to our grant professional to come up to explain the project and through the summary of the project, I would hope that it would answer any questions that you want me to ask. Mr. Deacon?
I take my question, I take it back.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This is, this is located down by the rec center. Okay, it's right, it's on the corner there like Wellington and going out onto Route 9. It's, you've seen a for sale sign on that property probably for 30 years, saying 16 single-family lots available. Haven't been able to do anything with that property. The owner and developer had approached us, I guess the first time over a year ago, about what they could do with that property. And they have proposed and put together some preliminary site plan for 40 units of townhomes. And what they're asking council to do is run this through a redevelopment plan and not through the zoning board where there might be several hundred zoning variances that you'd have to get. They'd like to do it, you know, try to go through that, which gives the council more input on the style of the homes and some of the other things you may want in that area because now they have to work with redevelopment agreement. There is nothing approved here at the planning board at this time. The redevelopment plan is not written at this time. It would have to be written after the MOU because the developer would fund all those activities.
Yes. Thank you very much. I, I know that these issues raise questions concerning tax benefit to the city. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so, so I know the biggest part of the city is pilots. And there's a difference between an abatement, a short-term abatement and a pilot. There is not a request for an area need redevelopment which would allow for a long-term tax pilot. Have they discussed a short-term, five-year abatement? They have discussed it, but none of that's approved because that goes through here and that's not what's being asked for tonight in the memorandum of understanding. That would be part of the redevelopment agreement. Whether, and it would not be for the developer. This is a homeownership project, not a rental project. And the developer has said to, to give an inducement to new homebuyers coming to town that they think it would be to the city's benefit, it's obviously to their benefit as well, to give a five-year tax abatement to the homebuyers that were coming to town at that time. But all of that is to be negotiated in redevelopment agreement, which is, this is just step one to get a memorandum of understanding so they can fund your council and fund the city planner to do the things that are necessary to negotiate those matters.
First of all, they're looking for us to give their approval so they can bypass the zoning ordinances?
It is not zoned for townhomes.
And what do they expect to sell these at?
We are being told that the sales price is around $300,000.
Okay, and what are they going to be assessed at?
Well, they're going to be assessed, that's a tax assessor question. What I do know is that-
They're going to be assessed at $300,000?
Well, they, they can't be by, by, by regulation, right? There's new townhomes that were being built on what I call Peterson Way off of California Avenue. Those sold for a little over $300,000 and they were assessed for a little over $140,000 because there's an equalization in values which can buy, best be explained by tax assessor on how that works.
Well, you, you can best explain it too because the difference between $300,000 and $140,000 is almost, you know, big.
I think the way I can explain it as a realtor, if I were to come sell somebody's town in town at $300,000, that is assessed at $150, the tax assessor cannot by law raise the assessment to the sales price, right? They can only adjust all the houses in town through a citywide reevaluation. So you can't do spot assessments. So when an assessor assesses the value of the property for tax purposes, they look at all the properties in town that are worth $300,000 and see what those are assessed at tax-wise. They don't look at the particular property because otherwise it wouldn't, it wouldn't be equal. So we cannot, we cannot sell your property for 300 and raise the assessment.
So these are going to be assessed at like $140,000 through what? They're comparable with Peterson Way up there on-
Comparable to Peterson Way, yes.
And they're going to have a five-year tax abatement on it, right?
Well, that's, 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 that's will be your decision in the future.
So what would the homeowners be paying in property tax at that point?
So it's 20, 40, 60, 80, 100%. So I think the taxes on about $140,000 assessment, what is our rate, about four?
No, five.
Is it five? So that's close to five, so that's $7,000 a year. So they'd be paying, you know, 1,500, 3,000, you know, up to, you know, 60%. Make, that's hard math there, right? Up to 800, up to 6,000, or up to $7,000. It's 20% a year increased over five years to get to a five-year. And at year five, it's the full, it's the full tax.
Fine, thank you. I don't know if this question belonged to him, but has this matter gone through the full review?
Yes.
Madam President. If I understand, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the MOU is just the start of negotiations. Am I correct on that?
Very first piece.
No, that's what I was going to say. And they'll be negotiating with both.
Through, through council.
Through council, yeah. Ultimately, the city council is the redevelopment.
I know, I just wanted to make sure.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Excuse me, council. I may, I know I'm a stranger here, but everybody knows my name. Jesse Trival, former mayor of Pleasantville. I have a random in the buildings, just like coffee. But I represent G and M, which is Guerrero and Miller Associates. I'm a licensed consultant, my own LLC business. I specialize in city government. And Will Guerrero is one of the developers. I don't know if you guys know Will Guerrero. He's done a lot of buildings in this area. He did the landings and he did Fox Run and he did a lot of projects in A-Rod and National and so forth. He's born and raised in Pleasantville. He wants to do something in Pleasantville. And he's really big on what they call community benefits. Developer comes and builds something, he'll give some kind of income. And he owns that parking lot at the rec center. He's always, he's always supporting the property. And the rec center uses it as a, you know, parking area. But what he proposed to do, when you come off a new road, there's a lot. He wants to propose to pave that and you can use that as a parking lot. But he hasn't been checking out a lot of properties in Pleasantville because he wants to do something in Pleasantville. Like I said, this is a man who's been born and raised in Pleasantville and he wants to do something in Pleasantville. And he's built homes, Acosta and Uptownship, he's built homes in Fisher Woods. So he's well established and he wants to do a lot of things in Pleasantville in time and so forth. So just wanted to bring that up. And like he said, it's 40 townhouses, garage, three bedrooms, basement, and it's built for first-time homeowners. And it's really something that we can really diversify because it's market rate and it's really a nice looking building. But you pass that up, it's, it's, it's no random, he doesn't look at pictures.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Because one of my concerns was the size of that lot and whether it's going to be, you know, feasible to put 40 townhomes.
They'll all be a part of the compliance, you know, orders and so forth, who have to be within the specifications of what's required, allowed in Pleasantville. This is a really good project. It ran off an expressway accident fire right in, in Washington Avenue. Right in a good location, so it's a good project. In fact, I wouldn't take them as a client because I've had a lot of clients come to me and I've turned them down because they're not for the benefit of Pleasantville. They benefit for the own pockets and all. So I can't name these people that I turned down, but I spoke to the mayor and the business administrator. They know. So I have affinity for Pleasantville, I like those I love Pleasantville and I'm big on property names. So this is a good project. Thank you.
When he, when he built in Fisher Woods, did he get tax abatements?
Oh, I don't know. This was years ago. He built homes, he built private homes. There's no type of projects other than private homes.
I have one question as far as the parking for the rec center. I mean, is he going to take that over and use that?
That's going to be used as part of the project. But there's another property across the street, is that home by the city?
So the city-owned, so prior to us getting to the MOU phase, that was one of our concerns. And immediately, as former mayor stating, the owner said that he would do something to make sure that the city had to do some parking for the recreation center. So we hope that door construction should, should just be successful, that he would construct the new parking lot on what is already city-owned property.
And someone question about MOU. This is an execution of the MOU, memorandum, memorandum of understanding. Talks about the fees and so forth, professional fees and so forth. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
That's all right. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk?
Resolution 91 authorize the execution of a memorandum, of an amended memorandum of understanding where take family LTD partnership acts to extend the time to negotiate a redevelopment agreement.
Any questions, council? CNN?
Resolution 92 adopting and certified the update and review of various sections of personnel policies and procedure management.
And Deacon, can you just go into this quickly?
Certainly, so as a civil service community, some titles under the civil service regulations are bilingual titles. But the person that is interested in being certified as a bilingual employee have to test under the state guidelines. Should that person test and successfully pass the test, they will then be considered a certified bilingual title. And there is additional increases for being a bilingual employee. And there's also benefits to the city as a diverse city. Someone who is not certified as bilingual, they don't get extra pay and you can't expect them to, to translate when necessary. But should they become certified, then they're required to translate and help the city when we have those challenges, situations with languages.
Any questions, council? CNN? Bill list, please.
All right, so Mr. Deacon has taken a vacation this week. He's giving me the bill list, so just bear with me. If you go to your pay check register on your first page under Ocho First Current Fund, a lot of those bills had to be paid out under the Pathways to Recovery Program. For instance, the Academy of Healthcare Excellence, you'll see Ideal Institute of Technology and also again another repeated bill for Academy of Healthcare Excellence. This, these are the students that were in the program that are now being trained through these, these educational facilities. The program, as you all know, ran, ran out in May 31st. So we had to encumber the funds by May 31st, so that's why you see all these bills. And everything under the Academy of Healthcare Excellence is all Pathways to Recovery. You go a little further down, you'll see the deposit for the Billmark Plumbing and Heating, but that's for the H-back system at the firehouse. And you go down to the bottom of the page, you'll see the city's payroll and the medical for our active and retirees. Going to the document for bills to be paid. Page one, the only thing that really skips out is to go to, down towards the bottom of the page, to Cherry Valley Tractor Sales. That's for a leaf blower and the amount $14,136,048. You go to the second page, you'll see the second law for bone and company. That's our professional services for the audits that was conducted and also some bond work that was done for the bonds that the city has put in place. Most of, everything else that you see on this page is your normal operating expenses. If you move to page three, you'll see the second law for the design and specifications for the roofing and that's under the Oran Engineering, the $16,912.24. Moving along to the next page, you'll see a payment of a little over $3100 and that is for the psychological tests that were taken by the previous new hires, our six firefighters that retired recently. Going to the next page, you see a stormwater discharge permit. That's the annual permit that is required for the city to pay to the state for our permit under the stormwater management, which is $5,250. And if you go to the last page, you'll see a name under the tax collector's office for $1,307.48 and that was approved by the finance committee as a 100% disabled veteran credit or reimbursement. That's all that really stands out is, there are any questions from the council?
Any questions? CNN? Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk? A little discussion. The table? Counsel, anything? Madam Deacon? Motion to pause? Work session?
Second.
All in favor? This is the City of Pleasantville City Council meeting. Today is June the 3rd, 2024. The time is 6:51. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city newspaper in performance with the Open Public Meetings Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Please stand in preparation and flag salute. Roll call, Madam Clerk? Davenport.
Present.
Dammalaram.
Here.
Cimona.
Here.
Korea.
Present.
Blackley.
Present.
Olvisby. Thomas.
Present.
May I have a motion to dispense previous minutes?
Go ahead, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, any confirmation, commendations? Retirees? Chief?
Trifol? Oh, okay. Chief Trifol, I'm retired, he looks a little makeless. And this is our acting chief and he'll accept this on his behalf. I'll still read these. And it reads as follows. City of Pleasantville offers the mayor certificate of commendation. Whereas Chief Trifol has been sworn, a sworn member of Pleasantville Fire Department since May 1999, and whereas Chief Trifol has held ranks of firefighter, fire captain, battalion chief, and fire chief, and whereas Chief Trifol was instrumental during the onset of the pandemic by assisting with coordinating and activating the city's first full-time emergency COVID operations center, where he was affectionately referred to as COVID Scott because of his unwavering commitment to providing a safe and healthy community. He also volunteered his time and services at the city's annual community event. And now therefore I, Judy M. Ward, mayor of Pleasantville, New Jersey, on behalf of the City of City Council, this administration, and the citizens of Pleasantville, do commend Fire Chief Scott Trifol for 25 years of service and pray that this next chapter will be built with peace, happiness, and joy. And witness whereof I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Pleasantville to be affixed this third day of June on the year of our Lord, 2024. Signed, Judy M. Ward.
Thank you. Chief Trifol made it tonight. He had a family matter, so I'm accepting the word on his behalf. He was a great leader for our department and we wish him the best.
Thank you. What worries about you? No, certainly, so you guys can, we've, we've said a farewell to chief at our department head meeting. So at that time, we took, we took the time out to just really talk about the years and how he transitioned from battalion chief to the chief. And one of the things that was challenging for, for him and the acting chief, we had these discussions, is about, you know, the passion that you all have for your department and how hard it is when you come over to this side and try to keep an open mind about how to make this work together. But he did that and he did that in a short period of time. He was very open-minded and, and communicated with administration. And I believe that he created a momentum within the department that I hope to see move forward to kind of bridge the gap of, of communication so that we're always working together as a strong unity. So we appreciate all the work that he's done. He's very passionate, as you all know, about people. He's very instrumental in helping our emergency management coordinator get on board with her new duties and responsibilities because he really cares about the safety and the well-being of, of people. So he shared a personal story with me that I didn't remember, but you never know whose life you're going to touch when you're touching it. And many years ago that you all may remember, he was in a real bad car accident. And there were some issues back then with his paperwork and he was on the verge of losing his job. But we stepped in to make sure that we got those documents in place and saved his job and he was ever so grateful. So he is going to be missed and I'm sure that his successor is going to do a great job as well. And we just wish him well on his retirement. This is Jimmy, our gentle teddy bear. Just let this last week, June 3rd. I'm going to mention. This reads as follows. Office of the mayor, City of Pleasantville, commendation. Whereas James Hubbard III joined the City of Pleasantville as a public works laborer in July 1988. Whereas James Hubbard III has received several promotions throughout his tenure, such as laborer, truck driver, supervisor, and assistant superintendent. Whereas in 2005, James Hubbard III received special recognition commending his efforts on the Marina installation of electricity and water. James Hubbard III has developed a great working relationship throughout his career with his supervisors and staff Kyrie Noradine. Public Works Street Supervisor state, congratulations on your retirement, James. You have dedicated 40 years to the City of Pleasantville Public Works. And your hard work and commitment will never be forgotten. I will miss having you around, but I know that you deserve a well-earned break. Enjoy your retirement, my friend. Now therefore I, Judy M. Ward, mayor of Pleasantville, New Jersey, on behalf of City Council, this administration, and the citizens of Pleasantville, this administration, and the citizens of Pleasantville, do commend James Hubbard III on retiring from 40 years of service in the Public Works Department, and pray that this next chapter of his life will be filled with peace, happiness, and joy. Whereas, and witness whereas, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Pleasantville to be affixed this third day of June in the year of our Lord 2024. Signed, Judy M. Ward. James deserved that plus more. I remember. When I first came, just what you see is right now is what Jimmy is made of. And I'm really, really going to miss him. He was always there. Each time that I called you, you're just, you're there for the residents. You're there for the employees. And I really, really am going to miss you, and I thank you for the job that you've done.
And I'd just like to say, past, present, and future, council people, mayors, I've met a lot of good people through my time here in the city that I've worked with. I just appreciate all of you. I appreciate it, and the guys that's coming behind me. I know you guys want to do a good job. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Forty years, we got too many stories. That's a lot. Do, Jimmy, take a picture? Did they get come?
It's only kid.
Oh, right. Come on, Harvey, can you get that for me? The picture?
Yes.
So Jimmy surprised me awesome.
I've seen you a long time ago, a long while. He's been a my.
Who did this on? Right, right. Can you guys see? No, but two on that side and two on this side of the ceiling. Tony's coming down. You got two. Harvey, can you sit about?
Everybody.
Forty years. Does he get a frame for that? Does he get a frame for that?
It's framed.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Did? Okay, yeah, 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 okay. Good.
You already had one, Tim Jones.
Can I say something about Scott?
Yes. I hope there's only strikes in his life from here on in. Mr. Tim Jones?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would just like to start off by saying, you may not believe this coming out of my mouth.
I wonder if you have a thought for it.
The comments of Mr. Janetti here this evening. I'm kind of like hearing. This is my opinion, this is here. I had some other comments with issues that don't relate to the city council here. And because of the joy of this occasion, I think I'll leave them to our next meeting.
Say, I have a motion to close on the portion.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clark? Okay, first is Resolution 84, authorizing a reportman firefighter to time recording. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Oh, okay, a roll call, I'm sorry. Davenport?
Yes.
Fablelaro?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Next, we're going to have the open office for Mr. Gordon. Okay. This is our new firefighter recruit. We went through changes to get him to the academy, so I'm happy to have him through the open office. State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I?
Aye. Time recording.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution
and a Constitution
of the State of New Jersey that I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith
and allegiance to the same
and allegiance to the same
and the governments established
and the governments established
in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people
under the authority of the people
and that I will faithfully impartially and justly perform all the duties of the Office of Firefighter for the City of Pleasantville according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you to the City of Pleasantville and the Pleasantville Fire Department. Still got the job not done since I get through the academy, and I'm wishing to be a servant to the City of Pleasantville where I'm from. This color is worn for reading to express my feelings.
Thank you to the mayor. Thank you to administration, council. Appreciate your guys' assistance with hiring the free time recording. Thank you to everybody coming out to support. Appreciate the firefighters for being out for our new recruit. And he has a lot of work to do, so thank you, guys.
And first is what is number six. First reading, amended Chapter 194, regulating the operations of mobile retail doing businesses. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Fablelaro?
I have caveat. Yes to A and B, and no to 195-54, same as Central Moses District. You're on what?
What is number six? You did the whole three.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying. No to...
No take for the first reading? Okay.
Got title on it?
Yeah, it's a title on it. Second read is what you stick.
Second read, what you stick.
Okay. Yeah, because you won't... Okay, Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, order is moved to second read scheduled for June the 17th. Resolution 85 endorsing urban enterprise zone assistance fund project entitled Little Collection Equipment Project for the public improvement to the UEZ in the amount of $536,792.0. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Fablelaro?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 86 approving the renewal of plenary retail distribution liquor licenses for the '24 through '25 term. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Second. Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Fablelaro?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Camona? Me, Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 687 approving the renewal of plenary consumption liquor licenses for the '24 through '25 term. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Davenport?
Yes.
Fablelaro?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 88 authorizing the person-to-person transfer of plenary retail consumption liquor license transfer to Cedar Liquor Market LLC has been, I have to say?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Has been pulled for June the 17th. I'm glad you all paid attention. I'm glad. Resolution 89 authorize assumption of submission of a grant application and execution of a grant contract for the New Jersey Department of Transportation for pedestrian safety improvements within the city. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Fablelaro?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 90 authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with the GAKM Associates LLC to create a redevelopment plan and to negotiate a redevelopment agreement to develop 40 townhouses at lots 1 and 14 and block 382. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Fablelaro?
No.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 91 authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with TAE Family LTD Partnership Act to extend the time to negotiate any development agreement. May I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Fablelaro?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 92 adopting and certified the update of review of various sections of the personnel policies and procedure. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Fablelaro?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need approval for the bill list. A motion for the bill list.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Fablelaro?
Yes, but no to 66666.
So, no to? Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas? Yes, the everything was 66666. So, okay. Next, I need a motion to approve of baby oil raffle licenses.
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Davenport?
Yes.
Fablelaro?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is the verification of the Mercantile License for Pleasantville Tobacco and Associates.
Is there anyone here from Pleasantville Tobacco and Associates? Hearing known the hearing is not concluded.
Okay. Resolution 93 revoking the Mercantile License of Pleasantville Tobacco and accessories.
Motion. Second.
Counsel, any questions? C and I. Davenport?
Yes.
Fablelaro?
Yes.
Camona?
Yes.
Correa?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution approved. That's his comments from counsel. May I?
No, that's not anything to sign. Everyone, thanks for coming out and have a good evening.
Thank you. You welcome counsel.
I do want to say congratulations to Gordon, the time of Gordon. We've been trying to get Pleasantville residents to be on the fire department, and he is from Pleasantville. So I congratulate and welcome him.
Yes, I just want to say congratulations to James Hubbard and to Chief Trifol for his retirement.
Anyone else?
Congratulations to the retirees. God bless you, stay safe, and everybody have a good night. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you all for coming out. Congratulations to James. I don't know if he left, right? He's very to retire. And of course, to the new fire headman. Thank you all for coming out.
I want to say to Time and welcome to the Pleasantville family, and congratulations. And I just wish Trifol and Hubbard the best in their next level of life here. So with that being said, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.